Order at 6:45. Finance Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I may want to provide a little bit of background information. On October 6th of 2020, the City Council authorized Mayor Gard to sign the Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Renewable Energy Grant, MOU, to complete a solar array project for the Riverton Senior Citizens Center. The total project cost was $59,908 to be funded with a 60-40 split between Rocky Mountain Power Blue Sky Energy Grant Program and the Riverton Senior Citizens Center. Through a special board meeting, the Board of the Senior Citizens provided a letter of commitment approving the cost of the project and their respective obligation for the funding. The solar panel project has reached substantial completion, and the contractor has submitted pay applications to the senior center for payment. The senior center endowment board held a meeting on Friday, May 14th, and the board was made aware of some significant staffing changes at the senior center, which included a vacancy in the executive director position. Members of the senior citizen board of directors communicated that there are grant funding concerns within the organization that has left them with a budgetary shortfall. While they're committed, 40% of funding allocated towards the contractor payments is available, they are not prepared to pay the total project costs and request reimbursement from the program for the remaining 60%. The senior center board members requested the use of endowment funds, which are held with the city of Riverton, to pay the total of the project costs and pay their portion to the senior endowment fund on or before June 30th of 2021. Further, the city staff will process the funding request for the Blue Sky Grant Program and reimburse the endowment fund for the monies remitted from them. The endowment fund must retain a corpus of $881,000, and the current balance of the fund is $969,642. So therefore, the safety of the corpus is not at risk should we decide to pay these funds. The endowment board feels that this is an appropriate use of the funding, and it does align with the terms of the agreement between the city of Riverton and the Riverton Senior Citizens Center. Please note that the city staff did budget $60,000 in revenues and expenditures for this purpose in the fiscal '21 budget, but the project was budgeted in the general fund. With this approval, the funding will be paid from the senior citizens' endowment fund, thus posing address in the year-end budget amendment. The Finance Claims Before You Tonight does include Pay Applications 1 and 2 from Creative Energies, and at this time, the staff is requesting approval for payment of $56,265.68 for the pay applications, and a final application of $3,282.32 will be submitted in a future packet for payment prior to the close of the June 30th fiscal year. It's not necessary that you make a motion to this fact based on this discussion because the claims are already included in the finance packet. So once you make that motion, should you decide to pay it, it will be included. However, I would stand for any questions if you have any at this time.
Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the claims.
I make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $773,802.5 along credit card in the amount of $3,191.92 and payroll liabilities for May 4th, 2021 in the amount of $209,712.49 for a total of $985,984.66.
I would second.
All right. Councilmember Salisbury made the motion, seconded by Councilman Bailey. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Is there anything additional?
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. Adjourned at 6:49.
Now call the May 18, 2021 Regular Council Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Cox will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in humble prayer and ask for thy guidance to be with us. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here and to represent the citizens of the city of Riverton. We ask a special blessing to be upon our law enforcement and upon the military individuals in our community that they might have safety abound with them as they do their jobs. We're grateful for the work that they do. We're extremely grateful for the citizens of Riverton and for their willingness to make our city as good a place as it can be. We ask for thy guidance as we discuss things this evening, that we might make good choices, we might represent the individuals well. We ask for these many favors and blessings, and we do it in thy name. Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristi Salisbury.
Present.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Dean Peranto from tonight's meeting. He had a pre-existing appointment before he was put on the panel, so we would need a motion. So moved. Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilman Bailey has the second. Any discussion? I kind of want to know where he's at. If it's someplace fun, would anybody know? We should have asked. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has a motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Council discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council and any other may speak now. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Your Honor, counsel, my name is Megan Ostranga, and I am the Site Manager of the Riverton Museum. I wanted to present to you an idea that we had to hang banners down Main Street, but first, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the Riverton Museum, as well as what we're working towards in Riverton. We collect objects as they relate to Riverton, the people of Fremont County, the Eastern Shoshone people, and the Northern Arapaho people. We rotate our exhibits in the museum, as well as in the airport, and we talk about the history and the stories of the people who live here. We offer a monthly speaker series, we offer children's exploration series, and we have adventure treks as well around all of Fremont County. And we also publish articles every week in County 10, and we have a monthly podcast as well. So as you can see, that we contribute a lot to the community of Riverton, and we'd like to promote a little bit more, so when folks come through, they can learn about all of us and our history. So these banners, we're hoping to put down Main Street, they're in front of you. We're hoping to do 10 of each design, so a total of 20 banners. We're thinking of having them be like the two post banners, so we would have to install a top or a poster, whatever. I don't know which one, if it's the top or the bottom one, but we will have to install an extra one. We were given a TAD grant this year, and so that's how we were planning to pay for both the banners, the installation, and the brackets that they'll go on. What else? The, like I said, was covered by a TAD grant. The Pioneer Museum in Lander did a similar project, and we'll be using the same company that they used for all of this, so that's where we got our budget and our know-how of how to install it. As for the actual installation, unless y'all have a better idea, our county maintenance staff, as well as our museum director, as well as the site managers, which includes myself, will be out there installing them. So, like I said, if you have a better idea, we're always open to those. But otherwise, we can be out there installing it. And again, we're hoping the banners, based on when they're hanging in Lander, we'll hang them until September, and we'll take them down for the winter and then put them back up in May. And we can offer them for other people if they'd like in the off-season, but like I said, our visitation is from May until September, and so we'd like to promote that heavy tourism through Riverton to come to the museum. So, any questions?
Thanks, Megan. We appreciate you coming. Anybody have any questions? I have just a few. Sometimes we hang other things out, like Ducks Unlimited flags, and so you would be up from May till all summer long?
Yes.
Till August? Did I? You gave that date, but I missed it. What was?
September.
Till September?
Yes.
So, staff, can you help me? The Ducks Unlimited asks for, can you remember when they go up?
Ducks, so what they're, if it's my, if I'm understanding this right, we have the flagpoles. You're not asking for flagpoles, you're asking for?
Light poles.
Banners.
Correct.
So Ducks Unlimited used the flagpoles, so it wouldn't interfere necessarily with Ducks Unlimited, or any of those, or the flags down Main Street?
FFA?
None of that.
Be interrupted.
This would be slightly higher, and they hang off on a bracket, and then they look like almost a up-and-down flag.
Kind of like Lander's doing right now with their seniors that are graduating?
Yes.
So you would put another bracket on our existing poles?
Yes. And there will be 20 of them, so it's not going to cover all of the poles. We're flexible to which poles, in which they go on.
Super. So you just need 20, and you'll select those?
Yes. I mean, we can work with you, too, as well. Yeah.
Your Honor, we would probably ask to work with the, if it's council's desire to have those, which is, they are quite nice, to work with them to make sure that we coordinate the installation and the use of those going down the line, but if that's understood, I think it's pretty easy.
Your Honor, I just have a question on the location. Will they just be on Main Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not on Federal.
Correct.
Okay. I'd kind of like to see them on Federal, too.
We can always apply for a TAD grant next year to put them down Federal as well.
It would be nice. So, I think the banners are really well done and are good, you know? It'd be nice for people traveling through to have a phone number to see if you're open and when you're open and where you're at, so I'm all in favor of it. So, anybody else?
That's a great idea.
Thank you. And I guess I forgot, I'm sorry, Councilman. I forgot to mention timeline. We can order them as soon as next week and have them as soon as the company sends them to us to hang them, hopefully mid-June.
Okay. Thanks, Megan. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
No. If there's no objection to it, we can work through it.
You'd better clear that with Megan or Kristen, because it's not on the agenda. You guys aren't on the agenda of voting. Okay? Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Would the city clerk, well, is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Ernie's walking the wrong direction.
Yep.
Seeing none, we'll move on and to go to item 8, Consent Agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the Minutes, May 4th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the Minutes, May 18th, 2021 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for May 18th, 2021. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of April, 2021. And two open container permit applications, the first for Carrie Shalatz for a Celebration of Life at J.C. Park on May 30th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and the second is for Michaela Kector for a graduation party at Sunset Park on June 19th, 2021, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the consent items?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening and passed the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $773,080.25. Elon credit card in the amount of $3,191.92. Payrolls and liabilities for the May 4th, 2021 in the amount of $209,712.49 for a total of $985,984.66.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes.
All abstained from the Bailey Enterprises item on the Finance Committee report.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks for that. Before we vote, I wanted to have some conversation on the open container permits in the park. Chief, are you okay with those two permits?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
It's a graduation party, so are we identifying the youth in separate way?
Your Honor, just, so the second person that she said it's a college graduation party, I know. I don't know about the first one.
The second one is for a college individual?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we can let them drink, then.
I think so.
She's getting her master's, so she's even an old woman.
As long as they can drink through their mask. Okay? Thank you for that information. I should have asked those before I got to this point.
Michaela Kector, she's 22, 23. She's, she graduated from college.
Super. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the, has the second. Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Further council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Council Leadership Ballots for Vice President. When we lost Councilman Rota, we, he was our Vice President of the, of the council, and so all the leadership positions are all in place still, but we will just be voting for Vice President. Tony, why don't you explain that? That was your, you were supposed to explain that. It says right?
Your Honor, I think you got it.
Did I sound like Tony when I said that? If that's sufficient enough?
Yes, Your Honor.
If you guys would mark your ballots, and then we would pass those in, and Tony and the Chief will take care of those.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Your new Vice President is Carla Borders.
Carla, you had to sit next to me to be the Vice President. I apologize for that, but that's the way it works.
Why don't you put deodorant on? We're okay.
Honestly, I didn't say that until after you, really.
I'll try to stay off your space. Sometimes I encroach.
I'm trying to do the same, so.
And we'll have Councilman Peranto sit on that side, so we'll be in good shape. Hopefully, we see him next council meeting. City Council assignments are always handed out at the first of the year, and once again, because of the new councilman that's been assigned, there's a change of committee assignments. And I did, I spent hours going over this, trying to get it right. And I don't want you guys to think I just didn't do anything, but I put him in the slots that were vacant, so. He is going to be on the Fremont County Rec Board, where he's been very helpful for many years with the school board, and he's also going to be on the Finance Committee. And that Finance Committee consists of Councilwoman Salisbury and Councilwoman Cox. And so next council meeting, we'll have to have another short pause to elect a chairman for that committee, so they can report. Okay? So, don't let us forget that. But I've already informed him of that and given him those assignments, and he was glad to get those, and we'll go do that work, so. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's council committee assignments of Councilman Peranto.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of the Wind River Visitors Council Budget. Helen Wilson, Executive Director, is with us tonight. Thanks, Helen, for coming.
Thanks for having us here. My name is Helen Wilson with the Wind River Visitors Council, and we also have our two appointed representatives over here, Julie Buller and Hal Heron, and we have Paula McCormick. And I'll just quickly go through our budget here, which I believe everybody has. The big difference with this year's budget compared to previous years is that we have an in-house staff now. So in previous years, McCormick Marketing and her employees has, has done most of the work for the Wind River Visitors Council, and now we are moving operations in-house while Paula retires. So staff currently is myself and one other person, Preston Ackerman, and we are hiring somebody else as well. So that's the biggest change. So, couple of numbers for everybody that, that I found interesting. Travelers spent $115.9 million in Fremont County in 2020. That's the calendar year, not the fiscal year. And that number was recently released by the Wyoming Office of Tourism. Tourism provided 1,410 jobs, coming to $48.8 million in wages. Compared to the rest of the state, and actually the rest of the country, we are doing really well for tourism, and obviously COVID, COVID hit the tourism industry incredibly hard last year, and people are seeing our location as somewhere to escape to. We advertise our wide-open spaces and, you know, our great community, where you're not crowded, where you can space, and so we are down 9.1%, which is incredible. It really is a good number. There's that. And local tax receipts are $2 million in 2020, which is down 13.2%, and state tax receipts, $4 million, down 16.2%. And I believe everybody has the budget, but do you have any questions about it?
I noticed that our budget, we're assuming we're going to collect roughly $687,500, and our expenditures for advertising, which are not delineated, are $258,000. Is it possible to figure out where all, when we've got newspapers, websites, regional, state, all of that?
Absolutely.
Are there figures there?
There are, and let me just quick, I'll go over this a little bit. So the total budget is 630?
Are they there?
They're not on the paper, no.
Why not?
We are, we are working on our marketing plan now, which is getting presented to our Board of Directors next Thursday, and that will get approved, and I have, I have a slideshow I'm putting together that I can definitely present another day. I can give you the highlights of it.
Not interested.
Okay.
Next question. I noticed that we're collecting roughly, Riverton collects 35% of the $658,000, and our total portion of that roughly is about $55,000. I don't think that equates.
Is this the TAD funds we're talking about?
Just talking about your figures on your.
Yep. So what we have is, okay, so with the, the TAD funds, 25% of the money that we receive goes to, it comes from lodging tax, and it gets distributed depending on how many, how many places collect that lodging tax. So, so Riverton collects 35.1% of the lodging tax and therefore receives $52,128. Lander collects 31%, so their total is $46,187. DuBois at 33.8% collects $50,197. So what, the way that that works is each town gets back a percentage of what they put into it. Shoshone and Hudson get a flat rate because they don't actually have hotels that collect the lodging tax. So Shoshone gets $6,000.
Shoshone's got a nice hotel.
They are starting, and I just, I just actually talked to, to them about, they're opening an RV park, and they were asking about the lodging tax for that, but they only get $6,000, and then Hudson gets $3,000. So the way that the money is split up depends on how much money each place is actually bringing in.
Okay, I see that. But I don't see where the, we get a donation of $20,000 to the airport. I don't see how $20,000 equates to $50,000.
So the $20,000 is completely separate. That is extra money that goes to the, the airport for marketing efforts, and that's the FAST group, and that is not related to the TAD funds. So that's actually extra money. So the total that Riverton is bringing in is $52,128 in TAD funds plus $20,000 that goes to the FAST, the airport group for marketing. So it's actually 70,000, 72,128 is the total with the two combined.
So next, so next time, we'll have figures that will show where that $50,000 is being spent in Riverton?
The $52,128, yes. So the way that that works is we actually, we give the money to the cities, and then they do grants, or the cities are, the cities get to decide how that money is spent, how it would best benefit them, and so we, yeah, we, we give it to the cities to, to determine where that money is spent.
Thank you.
Mike?
Is, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, that go through the Chamber of Commerce, and then they?
I believe it is the Chamber of Commerce currently, yes. And, and different, different places do it in different ways, but that's who gets the money now. So, so, you know, people can, well, the city decides where it's spent, but I know that some cities choose to do grants, and, yeah, it's, it's up to you.
It's up to us whether it goes to the chamber, or it goes to the chamber?
It's up to, I, I, it goes to the chamber currently, and I- It's up to, I, it goes to the Chamber currently, and I Paula, could you explain how the process is? This is my first time doing this, and this is why Paula is here as my backup. So, that is a great question about how that's determined where it goes, but that, that's how much money goes.
We forgot to bring our big spotlight we usually put
I know, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Your Honor, Council members. The Wind River Visitors Council, the 25% TAD funds, Tourism Asset Development Funds, is a voluntary program that the Wind River Visitors Council Board created probably about, gee, 15 years ago. And that is to support the tourism services in each community. We believe in some local control. We know that events happen at each of the communities, and our communities are so diverse. So, we wanted to empower the visitor services at each of the communities. Rather than the Wind River Visitors Council controlling 100% of the lodging tax, we take 25% out, which has nothing to do with state statute or anything. It's our own voluntary program, and there's no other lodging tax board in Wyoming that does it this way. No one gives out that much money. So, we do because Fremont County, we know, is so diverse, it's so different. We have multiple communities, two tribes, so it gets very challenging. Where would we even put One Visitor Center in Fremont County? No one would ever agree where One Visitor Center would happen. So, rather than that, we have empowered whoever is providing those visitor services in the communities. And that would be, so right now, it happens to be the Lander Chamber, the Riverton Chamber, and Destination Dubois. So, that's, those organizations actually oversee the grants. They can give out money to their events. They can use it to support their own frontline people who are actually going to answer the phones, hand out brochures, things like that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So, for council, the 25%, those numbers that we're talking about, that is just a TAD account. And Kristi, you're the liaison to the Chamber, and so you are the one that gets to make sure they spend it where we want to spend it. So, you may want to sharpen your pencil when you get there and see where that money's going, and you would be the one that would come back and tell Kyle where the $52,000. We already know where the $20,000 is going directly to FAST, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Now, some of the other questions, anybody else have questions? Some of the other questions that, with our new, with our new, and we're really glad to have the representation that we have, and I'm glad that both of you are here. Thank you very much for being here. They've only been able to attend one meeting up in Dubois, what, 50 days ago?
Yep.
And so, they're not really comfortable yet, and it should only take one or two years to get comfortable, right, Paula? But they are concerned with the new management style that we're going with and working Paula's company out and putting two new, or three new positions in, which is going to eat up 30
250,000.
40%.
About 30, 35% of the budget, correct? And so, and we still have, we still have the placement of the additional funds. So, I guess the question, TAD money conversations are great. That's 25% of the, of the money that you receive. And the 75% of the money that you receive, we would like a little bit, and our, are you under a time restraint to get your budget approved like we are? You have to have your budget approved. Paula's nodding.
We do need to have the budget approved, I believe, by July 1st.
I think it is
July 1st.
June 1st, the proposed budget has to go to the Department of Audit in July, June, July 31st, maybe. It has to, the adopted budget has to go. I think that's how it's written in the
Kristin or Mia, do you have any idea on timing, when their budgets have to be in?
Your Honor, their budget requirements might be different than ours, so I can't speak to what their requirements are. Ours needs to be approved no later than the second, no sooner than the second Tuesday or later than the third Tuesday in June.
So, we, I realize, and maybe the council, we should have tuned them up on that, they're under the same, you guys are under the same restraints as we are.
Yep.
And, and one of the problems that I see is that, that our committee members, if you only meet every 60 days, six times a year, we, we need to get information. And you have, you have a meeting this Thursday, correct?
We have, so, and I can address that. So, we have a strategic planning meeting on Friday, which is, which was actually created because we do have new board members. We also have a new board member coming from Hudson, who's not actually in yet, but she'll be taking Mike Anderson's place in July. And we, we were feeling that people, we wanted to get everybody together. It's a team-building, strategic planning, so we're all getting on the same page, so we're all moving forward on the same path together. And I think that's going to be really important for both the staff and the board, because it really is important to the organization that we are functioning together, and, and we're working on this strategic plan together, which has not yet been adopted. It's something that the board last year put together, and it's not adopted yet. And that way, the new, the new board members can be part of that process, and we can go over that, that whole thing. So, that's on Friday, the 21st, which is this Friday. Our next board meeting is next Thursday, and that's when I will be presenting our marketing plan, which is this marketing campaign that's right now just a bunch of codes. And I'm breaking that up, and I'm looking at where that money should be spent. It is a tricky year, you know, recovering from COVID. It's like, okay, where do we go with this? What direction do we want to take? Also, as you know, it's my first year in the position, and I'm looking at what we've done in the past, and what I think we should do moving forward. And so, this is something that, this is the main part of the board meeting next Thursday. As far as the numbers, the numbers that are moved into staff on this year's budget were actually for staff just in a different part before. It was under marketing campaigns. So, instead of paying someone to do, to do all of the things that McCormick Marketing and her team did, were actually, those have turned into a zero on this list, and then it's moved up into staff. So, we've looked at that very carefully. As I mentioned, I currently have one staff position filled, and it's a Community Engagement Manager, and I'm sure most of you will meet him. His name is Preston Ackerman. The other position I'm holding off on, and I was advertising it, but unfortunately, right now, it's very difficult to find qualified applicants. And, and I'm also seeing where Preston fits in. I'm seeing what direction we want to take with our marketing, and seeing, seeing what we want to do with that position, because the original job description I wrote was for a marketing manager. And, and I'm actually feeling like, like I've got the marketing covered, but we need more communications. And one direction that I'd like to go next year is really strengthen our, our PR, public, public outreach, get that earned media, bring in a really solid public relations person. We have, we do have a current public relations group that is based out of Denver, and we haven't been using them very long. And I actually am going to be switching to a company that, it's, the woman has worked with Wyoming Office of Tourism for 15 years, understands our area, knows us so well, and I think she's going to be amazing. And for, as far as the budget goes, the company we currently have, chunk of the budget goes to a six-month campaign. With the new person, the same, this exact same amount of money will go for the full year, because as you know, we have very strong opportunities for tourists in the winter months, and we really need to be, to be marketing that, bringing in influencers, getting that earned media. That's, that's going to be a really strong part of the marketing plan this year. Another thing that I've done is got brochures. So, we have brochures all around Wyoming and Utah and Nebraska, and, and now we have them in Jackson. So, this is as of last week, where we have our brochures available at 35 locations in Jackson, including the airport, because we would like to bring in, when the airport closes next year, we are trying to attract those tourists to fly into Riverton. And so, so on this trip over to Jackson, pictures were taken off the drive, because that's, that's the marketing effort for that is, you know, and I feel like I've said this to a bunch of people over the last few weeks, but we've all driven over that road, over Tokati Pass, and you see that first view of the Tetons, and it's like, wow, is this real? That's what we want to capture. That's what we want to capture in our ads, so that when people fly into Riverton, we're advertising our drive, we're advertising the places along the way. So, so we're doing more marketing in Jackson. Jackson Chamber of Commerce is currently running some ads for us camping, hiking, and at the airport. We have the brochures, as I said, at the airport and at 34 other locations strategically placed. So, when you're waiting in line at the, the bunnery for your yummy breakfast, and you're just wishing the line wasn't there, you can pick up a brochure that says "Room to Breathe" on the front. So, so we really are trying to market to that group. And I realize there have been a lot of changes in the Wind River Visitors Council in the last six months, and, and I'm working to make it so it's, the transition is strong, and you have, you have my word on that. And I know you don't know me, but you do have my word that we are moving in the right direction, and that, that this is a good, solid budget. And I am happy to come back and present it to you detail by detail at a, at your next meeting.
Super. And I guess that's where, where our thoughts are. You have a meeting this Thursday and Friday also?
We have Friday this week is the strategic planning, which is the team-building, strategic planning, adopting the strategic plan, and then next Thursday. So, Thursday, the 27th, I believe, if that's a Thursday, is our board meeting. And that is actually taking place in Riverton at the Intertribal Center in room 125, from 10 to 12. We'd love to have you there.
Okay. And so, this Friday, the 29th, and then, then the 3rd?
I think this Friday, the 21st, and then
Yeah, okay, you're right, the 22nd, and then?
And then, the 27th, is that a Thursday? Then that's the day.
So, if there's any major discussions that change your budget, in that we could, we could see you again possibly on the 2nd?
I would love to come back. Sure.
And then, we could, we could have input from our council, back to us, where they feel the budget is at. Would that be comfortable?
That sounds great. And I don't, I don't foresee any major changes in the chunks we have lined out here, but the marketing plan is, is definitely a work in progress. And, you know, we're at the stage, this is the time of year where people are sending in proposals, and that's why it's tricky to plug in exact numbers. And I want to make sure it's done well. And so, my plan is to finish it this week and then review it all next week before the, the budget, or before the board meeting, and then, and then it'll be ready to show to this group and to other groups who'd like to see it.
So, the June 2nd would still give you time to make your, your budgetary, budgetary restraints on timing?
I believe June 2nd is okay for, yeah, for the
Super.
For the approval.
We do appreciate your time, and we'll look forward to hearing from our representatives.
Aaron, Council, June 1st is your meeting, just?
Oh.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I have the financials from July 2020 to February 2021, and the disbursements, and what the Wind River Visitors Council is, 43,000 something out of 100. So, it's about 43% of their 101,000 that they have for a budget.
And so, I guess
I can share this with the council.
Okay.
The financial that we went over, but it's just from July till February.
And that's what we're really looking for. And so, that would give our two representatives two more bites at the apple with your group on that Friday meeting and Thursday meeting, and we get an update from them and then be ready to pass it on the 2nd?
That sounds great. And I will, I am happy to be here to answer any questions at your next, next meeting. And I'm also happy to either present, which would be tricky, it's a pretty long, it's like 43 pages, I think, but, or I could just email it to you as a PDF to look through the marketing plan, which has that breakdown of numbers and the direction that I'm hoping to take things this year with, you know, arrows saying up, we're doing more of this, and arrows saying down, we're doing less of this, so that you can get an idea for the, for my vision and the direction that we'll be taking things.
Okay. Mike?
And again, I don't want to come across that I'm trying to tell you how to do your job, but again, to me, we need to all be careful, and this doesn't apply just to your organization, it applies to all of our publicly funded organizations, that we have to be careful that we don't just overstaff and end up eating up all your budget on staffing and not have money to do marketing, which is really what your mission is, is to market Fremont County. And so, I guess I would just caution you to be careful you don't have, you know, overstaff and not enough money to spend on the things that you really need to do.
And, and I appreciate you saying that, and that's been on my mind, too, and that's part of the reason that I've, I've held off on hiring this third position, to see what we really need. And along those lines, and I wasn't going to get too into detail here, but that, that position that we would be hiring is to do some social media and to do, well, to do all the social media and to do newsletters and communications position. And I have, I am looking at, the, the Public Relations Company can also handle those things at a lower cost. And so, I'm looking at possibly doing that for three months and just seeing where the gaps are. I'm, I don't want to commit to too much, because I don't know where the gaps are, where we need that extra staff yet, with Preston just starting. But I'm also, I'm also aware that this might be a really nice solution. So, just kind of weighing out everything, not trying to move forward too fast.
Your Honor, one more thing.
Yes.
Paula, could you share with some of us that are new on this, kind of, your take on that with the marketing and, like, from your past experience? Like, share your thoughts on how far as that marketing goes?
I think so. I think so, thank you. We had, the Wind River Visitors Council had hired McCormick Marketing, you know, this has been 23 years for me, and then everything was freelanced out. So, what we looked at when we started working on the budget last year and decided to hire an executive director, because I would be, we needed a succession plan. We wanted the tourism industry to stay healthy. We looked actually at how much, like, all the W9s that we put out to all the people that I would hire freelance. And the money that we paid out freelance basically funds three positions. I mean, we had, you know, I probably had six different people working, not full-time, obviously, but project by project by project. But if, but if those people are providing their own offices and their own computers and their own vehicles and their own benefits, then, you know, they're charging $50, $60, $70 an hour. And so, by the time we added up all the W9s that McCormick Marketing was paying, we looked at, looking at salary and wages and benefits, and actually, it's a pretty clean move. So, where in a previous budget, you, obviously, that marketing budget looked a lot higher, but all the wages of everybody, all the freelance people was in that. So, we simply moved it into, we felt the stability of having staff and employees and benefits as compared to people who would just might be moving through and, and not committed to what I think takes to do the job. And this way, we were able to hire people like Helen to carry on. So, I actually believe this is more of a, money from this, it's almost the same amount of money, and it simply is going in a different line item, but we spend about the same, because if you aren't paying, I mean, if a good freelance person isn't charging $50, they probably aren't very good.
Well, thank you.
That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you for sharing that.
And we appreciate that. And the beauty of that explanation is we get Helen 100% of the time all year long, and, and we're not sharing, right?
Well, I think I get a week or so of vacation in there, but yeah.
I don't know if we can stop the slave ship long enough. Yeah, we understand that. So, Tony, Kristin, can we not act on this and then just put it back on the next agenda? Do you need us to table, or what do you need us to do?
Your Honor, I think we can just put it on the next one based on how it's presented.
Okay. That work for you?
That works for me. Would you like me to send over a PDF of the marketing plan once it's finished?
If you could, and if you could hit just Tony with it, he'll, he'll automatically deliver it to all the rest of us?
That sounds great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. We'll move on to item 12, consideration of ordinance We'll move on to item 12, consideration of ordinance number 21-005, second reading, unauthorized use of motor vehicles. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number 21-005 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 21-005 on second reading, an ordinance submitting Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Additional Traffic Regulations, to establish Section 10.12.180, Unauthorized Use of a Motor Vehicle, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 21-005 on second reading.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilwoman Bailey has the second discussion. We will, we're at second reading, so we don't have a public hearing here, but I would, I'd love to hear your opinion on this. So if I don't break too many rules, Kristin, can I do that?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Guard, and members of the council, Ember Oakley. And just quick background, I got a call asking if something had happened legislatively, and it involves criminal law. So I'm here both as Riverton's representative and as a county attorney, if you will, prosecutor, just to discuss the law and the processes with you as it relates to this, and specifically the unauthorized use of a vehicle statute that's in state law. And again, I'll get into, I think there was some confusion, so I just want to, I just want to discuss that. I will start out, though, by saying I completely support the statute and taking some of these. I know some, there's been some move to take, whether it's a state statute or make something similar in city ordinance, and I think, I mean, I'm all for that. The reality is, if you look at the Riverton Police Department, paid for, of course, by largely by citizens of Riverton, then our county taxes to pay for our sheriff and our jail, and all the fines unless they go through a city, go to the state. That's somewhat simple. Of course, the state does give us back some money, but I think I'm all for capturing some of this revenue. So with that, I do support this, and if there's anything as far as the law itself, or any questions as far as understanding criminal law, I would certainly weigh into that. But so getting to this, somebody called me and asked if, if we, we being, I've got to be careful with my we's, the legislature had repealed unauthorized use of a vehicle at the state level because they had listened to a YO Today interview, and it was said that there wasn't a state statute for that. So I started there, and just to be clear, there is still that statute, but it referenced last council meeting. So I went back and I watched, and I watched that. And now I think I understand where there was some confusion, maybe some intermingling of issues or conflation of issues. So that's what I just want to discuss. So in that meeting, it was said that the circuit court is not processing these crimes. And an example was given about a rash of 10, I think you probably remember last summer, unauthorized use or, you know, taking of vehicles. So I started there looking into that, and what I found was that that case involved, the perpetrators were aged 10 to 14. So some of the issues there are, were the issues of juveniles, which, to be sure, there are issues. It's a difficult thing when you're discussing incarceration of children. And it's difficult philosophically, it's also difficult legally. There's federal laws, state laws about how that has to look, such as there has to be sight and sound separation for all juveniles that are incarcerated from any adult inmates. I think it's been about a decade, but our Fremont County Detention Center no longer has that. We couldn't dedicate the space anymore. So even when the decision is made to incarcerate children or minors, you know, they have to, you have to find a place, probably, we've done Sweetwater, Natrona County, you have to find a place where they have that sight and sound separation, where they're available to do it, where they'll then take a kid, it was difficult during COVID anyway, I don't know if you'd have found anybody, to take them. And then, of course, then has to be transport and paying for that. So then you start looking at, even if you, if it was a big enough crime, they have to be a minimum of 12 for the Wyoming boys' school, girls' school. And again, those are big decisions to make, and that's not something that's done lightly as far as, you know, that's usually a fairly big crime. So anyway, so those issues always exist as far as juveniles, and we certainly did, you know, struggle with those and would continue to do so. I don't think there's anything that would have been handled differently or could be handled differently with different statutes or if, you know, if the city ordinance existed. But even though there is a different process, juveniles do go through court processes. It isn't the same, but there's a diversion, there's a process that can be through district court. And again, diversions are often done through circuit court. And if not, then they can be charged as adult or charged through a regular court. And that's done as well. Each case is taken individually. And then, but I also want to be clear that, like, you know, during COVID, maybe a separate issue, but all crimes were investigated and pursued and cited, and things continued. It might have been via Zoom. But, you know, I can say our Riverton police officers, I mean, our street officers are some of the best, our deputies, and all of that continued. Crime and law enforcement was absolutely pursued during that time and still is. So, and then I guess, so I think there was maybe some, like I say, the issues that have to do with juveniles in relation to this, that's really where the problems arose, especially very young children in that rash of case, rash of unauthorized use. And then finally, I think it was Councilman Larson, there was a discussion at the end about felony, and I just wanted to be clear that we don't have a specific entitled, like grand theft auto or something, but we certainly have anything over $1,000 that's stolen, obviously, if it can be proven is, can be charged as felony theft. So we do, that's how we charge felony theft of a vehicle, and we certainly charge that. And there are many, we've got them pending right now. We also have current unauthorized use of vehicle charges pending. So both of those statutes are certainly used. But should the crime warrant that, we absolutely do, you know, pursue felony charges when somebody's vehicle is stolen. Happens quite often, probably unfortunately, happens more frequently than you'd like to realize here in Fremont County. So I just wanted to be clear about, there's the unauthorized use of a vehicle in state statute, that's still there and used. Felony theft can be used. And of course, if the council chooses and makes this a city ordinance, which again, I'm all in support of, can be taken there, too.
Kyle?
My memory's not that good, but as I remember, the chief said that the arrests were over a period of, say, three weeks, and it was the same individual, and it was treated very lightly. Now, I don't know about your background or my background, but I know that theft is theft, whether the individual is a minor or my age, there ought to be repercussions. That's what this is trying to do. And the incidents that he spoke of were minors, but that's not what we're trying to do here. We're not interested in arresting minors, we're interested in unlawful usage of cars. And so most of the time, most people don't drive a car till they're after 16. So that wouldn't be a super minor, but that's where we're at.
And I might be part of the problem because I left the discussion thinking that there wasn't any auto theft any longer. And so what you're telling us is there is auto theft unless your car's not worth $1,000, right?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. I've actually thought of that before, that I think that's maybe should be fixed because I think that's probably a really unfair, could be a really unfair result. I know, I know plenty of people, we probably all do, that probably drive an $800 car, and that's their lifeline to get to work and every, everything else, because that would be that, the loophole then, that that would, that would be a misdemeanor unless that, we've talked about possibly a burglary. If you enter something with the intent, without authority, you enter something to, with the intent to commit a theft is a burglary. So we thought maybe we could, but it's kind of circular. I don't know if that would stand up. But, but yeah, so that's, and that's really all I wanted to do here is just in the discussion of this, make sure that, because for the community to know, there is a state statute that can be taken through circuit court, that's a misdemeanor for unauthorized use. If you guys pass this, there'd also, that it could be taken through city, and that theft can be taken as a misdemeanor or over $1,000 on any item, over $1,000, we can take that as a felony. So that is an option, and again, it is used quite often.
And so in reality, there is not a specific law that deals with felony auto theft? Is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, the newest round, I'll just be honest, I don't really love it, but I think it's, this is the first year, they took all of the different types of theft and put them all into one statute. Again, that was just something they chose to do, it was based on Colorado law, I don't know why. But you think of shoplifting, you think of, you know, all these different theft of fuel, these different, they were all broken out. They took, they took them and condensed it. So we basically have one theft statute with all these different, you know, you can choose, you know, this one from this group and this group, and that fits this crime and charge it that way. Again, I think it's easier personally, just like leave shoplifting, we know what shoplifting is, but like shoplifting isn't on the books technically anymore. So the same thing, people think of, you know, like the wording, grand theft auto, we don't have that, we've got theft, but anything over $1,000 does hit that level and we can charge it, and again, and do.
So we do do shoplifting in our municipal court, and do we have to hit a certain dollar volume before it triggers that?
Before, no, and not unless you were trying to, and you don't have felonies go through your court. So then, no, technically, anything like theft, if it's a misdemeanor, I don't have to prove the value of it. I don't, you know, it's misdemeanor theft for me to take anything from you, and you don't have to prove a value to me. So, but clearly, when you start looking at the consequences of felony, that's when it triggers that, over, and current Wyoming statute is over $1,000.
And you know, we need to, this is not the place to do that, but we need to get together with you and look down the road a ways and try to realize that our juveniles, when there are no consequences to what they do, and they just plague the police, and the police have to treat them with kind of kit gloves because of their age and who they are, they know that quicker than we do. It's obvious we're not up to speed as they are. And so if Mike and I go out and boost a car that's not worth $1,000, we can drive it around, have a lot of fun, get out of it, leave the keys, and we would go to jail when you caught up with us, but a 10-year-old can have a lot of fun doing that. And I think we all understand that 10-year-olds aren't really good at traffic laws, and so we have all sorts of other problems go with that, right? And so we would like to schedule some time into your time and meet with you and Pat and see if there's some things that we could do to make, if it's ankle monitors, if it's something, some type of deterrent, so our police have some teeth when they're dealing in this, in this fashion, and we could get better educated. I think even on the radio, Ernie and I and Tony discussed the fact that there is no grand theft auto, and that's misleading information, and we should have, we should have presented it. I suppose that's factually true, that there isn't a grand theft auto, but anything that's taken that's over $1,000 would be considered a felony account, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate your comments. It really couldn't come at a better time, and I know that maybe this whole discussion's out of line, but interestingly enough, I'm on the Judiciary Committee, and the big interim topic that they assigned for our committee is juvenile justice. So actually, I would invite everybody on the, any member of the council, as well as, of course, I'd love to have that meeting, and anybody in the room of the community that's listening, because I will tell you, one of my concerns is actually it marching in the opposite direction, kind of like what you're discussing. They're saying that Wyoming has the highest incarceration rates of juveniles. I don't think there's really good data, I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that. But we saw that there was something presented to us to say you can't fine juveniles this year, and that's why I thought, at some point, I was like, we are literally not going to have a way to hold a juvenile accountable. And again, maybe just me vamping up on some examples of some very serious crime that we have and have had in this community from people under 18. So that's of concern to me, and, but as Riverton's voice, as everybody's voice here, I would like to be a part of that and make sure that the discussion is fair and honest, and we don't get ourselves in that position.
I know it's hard to believe that I wasn't an angel as a young, but my mother and father would always threaten me with the boys' school in Worland, and especially when we were driving by, they would point over and say, you know, that's, you could have a room there if you're not careful. And so does it take a felony to go to the boys' school?
It would certainly be that level of, yes, those are very, those would be significant crimes. So yes, I can't think of anything that anybody would ever be incarcerated in that sort of, this long-term placement. That is, I don't want to misstate something, but that's more like the penitentiary for underage or something, that's, those are very significant. And again, it's used because of that, because of them being juveniles, it's used very sparingly.
And I, I watched the jail report, I'm, sheriff is kind enough to send me that twice a week, and it's really high the last, last time I saw it, which was yesterday. And we really do need to have a discussion that is pointed to how do we help him. I feel that he's, the only guy that got handcuffs on in the system is him, and he can't move with what's dictated to him. And we need to either enlarge our facilities or do some, something that's bigger, longer term than what we're doing right now.
Yes, Mayor, I would agree with you on that, and I do think that there's a possibility that even this improves that, if, on the crimes that are right to fine, rather than spend more time incarcerating, if the city takes more of those, we get the revenue from it and perhaps use that as punishment and maybe on misdemeanors, go down to lighter sentences. I know people don't want to hear that, but we are at a critical, lighter sentences for some of those, and look at the people who maybe hitting them in the pocketbook would be a deterrent to them. There's certainly some people who it's not, but...
Well, $750 fine would at least be a start, right? Collecting it is once again the other side of that, right?
Yes.
And so we would need to have some idea on what we can and cannot do to do that. But we do welcome that conversation, and if you, if you could get us in the room, we would, we would love to, at least I would, love to have that conversation at a magnitude that might make a difference.
Well, I really appreciate that, Mayor, because we are, we are, I think, just feel like a lot of us, I'm sure the chief, law enforcement has certainly, you know, just feel like they're banging their head against the wall, and we've got smart people, we can solve some things. So I agree with you. I'll reach out to you, and I think we should really start having those solution meetings. We've got to figure this out. And I very much believe that the city also deserves some, you know, the county jail is also for the city of Riverton and the city of Lander. So I very much support also having access to that, and I know that that's something that's been reduced or taken away, and I think we need to insist on that.
Yeah. And, and we really do, from our position, feel like that's been taken away because we don't have that. And I'll quit trying to practice law and say there's no grand theft auto on the radio anymore. But it's good to have that education so that we know what we're talking about and what we, what we really are talking about, so we can try to solve those things. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Kyle, anybody else have any questions? Staff? Chief, did we cover that nauseous?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I would think that's a good idea. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bit award for Lewis Street. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is one of our 1% projects this year. It is in the Spencer subdivision. Years ago, when utilities were installed in Spencer subdivision, Lewis Street was not improved like some of the other streets were as far as surface improvements go. This project will include some curb and gutter improvements, some drainage improvements, but most importantly, asphalt surface improvements. From basically where our right-of-way ends near the entrance to the church off of Lewis and then to Edith Street. Bids were, well, the project was advertised and bids were publicly opened May 12th with the following results. Seventy-one construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Dave's Asphalt Company in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. This project was designed in-house, and I commend our city engineer Brendan Toman for his design and diligence in that. He has reviewed the bids for responsiveness, and we determined that seventy-one construction is responsive to the bid specifications and requirements. We therefore recommend the city council award this project to seventy-one construction. The engineer's estimate was just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and there are funds in the 1% account to cover this project.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to award Lewis Street Improvement Project to seventy-one construction in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Cox has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Airport Board appointment for Ralph Sellia? Sellis? Sellies?
Estelle.
Estelle? Thank you. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are sad to lose Mr. Dean Peranto from the Airport Board, but are happy to continue to work with him with the City Council. Mr. Ralph Estelle currently serves as an alternate to the Airport Board. And with Mr. Peranto stepping down, we recommend that Ralph Estelle move from a alternate board member to a full-time member of the Airport Board.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Ralph Estelle as a full-time member of the Airport Board.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Borders has, I said that wrong, Councilman Larson has the motion. And the second is Councilwoman Borders. Discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 21-007. First reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Section fifteen point zero eight point zero six zero, Electrical Inspection Revision, or Community Development Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Local enforcement authority for electrical work within a particular jurisdiction is granted through the State Fire Marshal's Office via Stat, State Statute thirty-five nine one twenty-one A. Under the provision of the statute, local jurisdictions may be granted the authority to perform plan review and inspections for fire and electrical items. Without this authority, these duties would fall under the jurisdiction of the State Fire Marshal's Office. The city of Riverton has maintained local enforcement authority since it was made available. In February of this year, staff was contacted by the State Fire Marshal's Office to discuss changes which were made to State Statute thirty-five nine one twenty-one, specifically thirty-five nine one twenty-one A four. This section of statute details the level of training those performing fire safety and electrical inspections must obtain. Prior to the change, inspectors were required to possess certification through the International Code Council, or ICC, or the International Association of Electrical Inspectors, the IAEA. Now, statute also requires licensing as either a journeyman or master electrician, in addition to being certified through one of those two organizations mentioned earlier. Currently, the city of Riverton does not employ a journeyman or master electrician. Ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero seven is being presented for your consideration to better define the role of the city's electrical inspector and provide the ability to either employ or contract for electrical inspection services and maintain local enforcement authority, rather than having authority revert back to the state. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero seven by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero seven on first reading. An ordinance amending Title fifteen, Building Construction, Chapter fifteen point zero eight, Electrical Code, Article three, Permits and Inspections, Section fifteen point zero eight point zero six zero, Electrical Inspector, subsection A of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Borders has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I now declare a public hearing open. Public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state law and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, the Chair would suggest that we close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. And Councilwoman Borders has the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero seven on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Councilman Larson has the, the second. Further discussion. Eric, could you lay out your vision on how we find those inspectors?
That is a really good question, Your Honor. We are currently working on that. Again, staff thought it would be appropriate to at least have this verbiage in the municipal code so that we're prepared for any eventuality. The current outlook is to either find someone that's close to retirement, that has their master electrician's license, and is willing to remain on, but may or may not want to be an employee of the city, and then contract that labor out. Or approach several of the master electricians in the, in the city. They could then perform those electrical inspections on work other than what they have performed. They wouldn't be inspecting their own work, obviously.
That's why we would need more than one, right?
Correct, yeah. Probably a field of five to seven. If someone can't make an inspection, we just move down the list until we do. And it would just be a rotating schedule so that we're not always calling contractor A first. It would be A, then B, then C, then D, and then so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a legislator in the audience that we could burn at the stake for this, but we'll, we'll bypass that for the moment. I, I see it as a, an opportunity, we'll just have to make that, that work. So it appears to me that as I'm looking this over, I should have, we should have changed from seven to two. Is that correct, Kristin? You, you changed it for me in one spot. No, that's the next ordinance.
Yeah, the next one.
Okay, thank you. So we are right there. Any other discussions? Staff have anything to add?
No, Your Honor.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation ordinance is, the ordinance is twenty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. So it's not an ordinance, we're just, that's the budget that we're talking about.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. I'll catch up here in a second. City Administrator's Report, please.
Your Honor, I didn't, I need to make this work. So if you want to take a couple minutes, it's going to take that long. However, there's a lot of money in the IT budget, so.
We'll give you two minutes. How's that?
Two minutes, I can do two minutes.
If you don't use it all, you can yield back.
Very nice. You know the temp password?
Been watching too much CNN lately.
Yeah. Knock it off, Ryan.
Hey, look at that! Adam just walks in and it fixes it.
Yeah.
It's his personality.
Did I do it in the wrong order again?
Good job. You can yield back your three.
We'll talk about my training budget for IT later. I promise. All right. Well, I'm here once again. It's a lot better to be here this year than it is, than it was last year. We can all, those of us who were here last year remember some very unsure times. We were having this conversation, you know, and, and developing these right as city hall was closing, right as a lot of businesses were closing, and a lot of unknowns in our future. But this year, obviously, it's a little different. And so that's good, and we're happy to be here this year. And we're happy to provide you the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation. The adoption is scheduled for the eighth. So, but we do this in advance. We always do this a little bit in advance, and it gives you the opportunity to either ask questions of us this evening and, or anytime throughout. We want to be as clear as we can, but we also know that going through what amounts to your packet, which is about a hundred and fifteen pages, if I'm remembering correctly, becomes a little bit challenging. Sorry, one sec. I have notes, too. So with that, I wanted to give a little bit of an overview, and then we'll get into it. Some of you will seem, seem that, it will seem that, to some of you, that this is going to be a little similar. And the reason is, we keep it relatively consistent. The process for this budget began made on, in March of this year. Council adopted a particular schedule, and we alerted the media that there may be potential quorum for the different meetings. We do that every year, just to make sure that if everybody decides to come to a particular meeting and has time, that we've announced that. We did have one meeting that was rescheduled. We did alert the press on that one as well. So to make sure that quorum, quorum requirements were met. One of the things I want to do, talking with you about this budget a little bit before we get started, is discuss our methodology. Throughout our process, we go through not only our estimates for revenues, but also expenditures, capital, and we do cuts. And one of the things that isn't going to surprise you is that, guess what? We're a little conservative. And, but what does that mean? Well, obviously, we're in Wyoming, and conservative is, means a lot of things. But in this case, it means that we tend to overestimate our expenditures, and we tend to underestimate our revenues. And there's a good reason for that. The reason for that is the same reason that every time we tell you about sales tax, it's a better conversation than you expected. The reason we do that and the picture that we paint with this budget is a matter of trying to say, here's the, almost the worst-case scenario. We have been reasonable in the amount of money we're trying to spend. We have been trying to make sure that we fund our city consistently to do the things that we need to do. But we also don't have rose-colored glasses on. We understand that things can go wrong, and sometimes do. And as such, that's a little bit more of what you're going to see. That's very normal. It's no different than it was last year, with the exception, last year, we took a twenty percent reduction in estimated sales tax, just to start out with. We cut pretty deep last year. We didn't know what it was going to do. So you'll see some changes. Keeping in mind that part of that methodology is understanding that, like an envelope or a rubber band as you move through, you can put some tension and not buy things. But you're, you're deferring certain costs, and we have to get those costs. We'll talk, the easy one I always use is police cars. It's really easy. It's very definable. We know how much they are. It's a nice round number. Sorry, Chief.
Sorry.
But he's not sorry because he has a lot of police cars this year. But the reason we do that is, doesn't mean if you say, okay, we're not buying it this year. Well, that's great, but guess what? You're buying it next year, or it's going to break down, and you're going to buy it this year anyway, and you didn't plan for it. We try to be conservative in those estimates, and we try to make sure that those costs can come back. And that comes across all departments. With that, I'm, sorry, excuse me. I always like to start with a couple quotes, and I have a couple things that are, you know, atone. Budget takes all the fu, a, a budget takes the fun out of money. Yep, anybody who's ever done one knows that's true. We also know that we didn't actually overspend the budget. The allocation simply fell short of our expenditure. Okay, also true. And my personal favorite is always, and I put it in almost every year, it's clear, it's clearly a budget, it's got a lot of numbers in it. Yeah, this one does have a lot of numbers in it. Now, when we're looking at our budget and the development of it, there's a lot of different items that, a lot of different tools that we use. Sometimes we make a point to, sometimes we have to reduce our expenditure, reduce how much we purchase. That has mixed effect. Case in point, it doesn't always work. Sometimes we have to forego certain, certain expenditures, and that's good for some and bad for others. And finally, sometimes we have to get a little bit creative about how we do our training, how we purchase different vehicles. And that's probably pretty true, true, too. This is not our people. I want to be very, very clear about this. And ultimately, we make do with what we have. And this team is very, very good about doing exactly that. Again, not our people. So, but, all joking aside, and getting into it, what we start out with is a general overview of the existing budget. The total budget for this year is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six thousand and change. I won't read every single number to the end, it takes a while. Across all funds, that's every single fund in the entire budget. This is compared to twenty-six million, seven hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty-one. The decrease is approximately four million dollars, or fifteen point two percent from the prior year. It's not surprising, we'll talk about that a little bit with capital, and there's reasons. We completed some projects. Not every year is going to go up and up and up. Capital in this year is seven point two million dollars across all funds, compared to ten million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand last year. The decrease is about three point six million from the prior year. Capital expenditures do make up thirty-two percent of our overall budget. General fund, generally, there are two types of funds that we talk about. The general fund, which houses, which we'll go into detail on later, that houses things like police and parks and the like. And then also our enterprise funds, which operate more like a, more like a business. Sometimes we look at the airport as a merit fund or something else, but that's simply because we've worked really, really hard and done a very good job of trying, of developing the funding for that. You'll see when we get to the slide about the airport, that it's a very diversified funding structure this year. And that's a great credit to those who are working through that. The capital in this, these numbers also includes two items, which is edge funding and economic development money going to the depot foundation. That's about six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and we'll go into that in detail. But I want you to know that that's mixed in throughout these discussions. With the development of the new Edge Committee and that funding stream, we have to work that in, and we have to have it as its own line, of its own fund. And so you can't, it doesn't get mixed in. And we're very clear about this. It does not get mixed into just a general fund, and we try to, we're, we're tracking that independently. We maintain our fiscal reserves per council of eighteen point five percent in all funds. Last year, one of the things, and you'll hear me say this a couple times, one of the things is that we started looking at dipping into reserves last year. That never was realized. We didn't end up doing that. And this year, we're not suggesting that we go into it. We will use cash instead. And this year, we're not suggesting that we go into it, we will use cash instead, and the existing revenues that we have, some of the cash that we've made in order to accomplish the existing, the proposed budget for you. We do have a discussion, we do not pull from reserve, but we do have cash allocations. Cash allocations, we'll go through a little bit as an example. Some of it is money that is budgeted now and pulled forward, so we'll talk about that. I always use police cars because we did that, two of them this year were not able to be purchased, they'll be purchased in next year, so we have the money, it moves forward, that's cash. There is items such as sales tax, we have additional sales tax dollars that goes to them to cash. I was very inconsistent in how I transitioned between the two, we'll work on that. General fund revenue estimates, starting with the general fund, our revenue estimates are $8.3 million, almost $8.4 million compared to $8 million previously. This is results in the 3.4% increase, keeping in mind, we took that 20% previously, and we didn't realize it. We did see, we are estimating increases, sorry, in some of, in a number of different items. If you go through your packet, you'll see a lot of different revenue streams. However, sales and use tax, property tax, cigarette tax, and the like are showing some increase. We're showing decreases in mineral royalties. I don't think that's really surprising anybody right now, but we'll see what that turns into over time. So with that, and then we are seeing some decreases in franchise fees, specifically Charter Cable, Charter, Quest, Rocky Mountain Power franchise fees. We have developed those, but some of it is, that's a matter of use and getting paid. So it, that, that has more to do with the use of it and what they're collecting. Sales and use tax are the, is the largest sink, is the largest source of income for the city budget, for the general fund. 27% of the revenue for the general fund. We're estimating a 35.3% increase compared to the fiscal year 21 budget. But again, we're doing that because last year, we showed a 20% decrease previously, and we've talked about that at length. Staff also, grants account for about 10% of the entire budget. Staff oversees 22 grants this year, totaling $2.2 million. 954, almost 955 of that grant goes towards capital. Keeping in mind that one of the grants we had last year was Riverton Water Supply. And that, when that goes off, that's a big chunk, so that's one of the reasons you're going to see those items come down. Also, by the way, staff is directed to throw things at me if I say something that's incorrect. So if you see something fly, you'll just realize I was wrong. So one of, this is one of the items that you've seen throughout the year in our weekly reports, our sales tax graph. So in our sales tax, currently, we have one more month left, left to collect, and we're about, in just sales tax, $667,000 high. So when we talk about cash and moving forward, that's money that we use. With the additional monies that we have, we'll be able to use to buy the cars, to buy the equipment, to buy whatever we choose to. Use taxes, use tax is similar to 100, 112,000. So we're running at approximately $778,000 above estimate. That's really, really nice, especially when you could, if I went back and I show you $400,000 cash, $400,000 pull from cash, and there's 778 in one line. So that helps us when we start looking at how the money moves a little bit. Keeping in mind that we track this consistently, the, one of the best parts about the use of sales tax graphs and all that isn't just because it's super fun to make it, but it actually gives us, allows us to test the temperature of what's going on in the community, have conversations a little bit beyond just the number, but what does it mean? What are people doing? There are a number of different items that apply to this. One, we need to thank our community a great deal, because they continued to not just purchase, not just purchase randomly, or just stop purchasing, they still bought things, and they bought things locally. Additionally, Amazon is now taxed for sales tax, so buy Amazon, that's fine, but it's still, we still get local sales tax off of that, and that, that change is actually quite useful. When we talked about the different items that make up the general fund, there's a number of different, there's a number of different departments, they're listed here. These are all items, and one of the things that is important that we know about the general fund is that unlike the revenue, other, unlike other funds, such as the water fund, rates don't apply necessarily. We can, you can't just randomly raise rates in the general fund. You have a tax base, and that's one of the conversations, is we got, talked to the legislature and the like, and I'll get into that later. When we talk about direct distribution, when we talk about sales tax, those are the things that really matter to that fund, and they provide those services that are just that, they're services, they're not as business-oriented. So these are the different, these are the different departments. Keeping in mind that those different, that we also oversee the economic development, we just kind of rolled that in. And while it's its fund, it's just kind of handled by administration. In the general fund, general fund revenue is about $8.4 million with operational expenditures of about 6.8. This includes a transfer of $24,000 to the Economic Development Fund, and a transfer, and the transfer from cash for operations and capital that you see combined there, with capital expenditures approaching almost $1.8 million. We're going to get into capital a little bit, and I would draw your attention to your books on page, starting on page 109, there's some good detail. That'll help you when we discuss, so I don't go into great detail, and we're not, and we're here till 10 o'clock. Some of the general fund highlights we talk about with regard to capital budget are, we have facility improvements, we do have the North Federal Decorative Lighting, that's large, that's grant-funded, and that's something that staff went out and got, and we were short that, that decorative lighting at the end of the project, and we just ran out of, that, there was, just wasn't money. So I think it's pretty impressive that we go and get those grants for those things, and that's kind of hard, but now it's going to be, look so much better. They were a little slow in getting us paperwork, but Kyle's received that, and we're processing through it, so that's going to be going in and paid for in this particular budget, keeping in mind, we applied for it previously. That cutoff line that we deal with is like everybody else's, it doesn't operate necessarily like a normal business, we just have to understand, we have to reappropriate money sometimes. North Federal Decorative Lighting, PD vehicle and capital vests, I had a couple of questions about this, and this is as good a time as any to talk about it. There was some question, when you look at the table that is provided to you in your book, that shows the police department seeing $163,000 reduction. Let me be very clear, that is due to the fact that we are moving a line item, an expenditure line item, from that department over to courts, that is prisoner housing. So the line that used to be there that we calculated is now calculated someplace else. You'll notice that if you take the one from the other, the change is almost exactly the same. So, no, let me be very clear, no, we are not defunding police, that is not part of the conversation. We do have five police vehicles in here, three patrol, two detective vehicles. We had two coming from previous year, and another three this year. That is a matter of purchasing timeline, and it is difficult, but we do get on state bid for those, a lot of those, so we have to go through that process. There's also other things like SRT vests for, for the team that need to be replaced right now. So those are, those are already in our budget, those are expensive, but they are in the budget, and it's part of what we do. There's a, there's a good number of fleet purchases that you'll see throughout. You'll see some of those are shared between different departments, water and wastewater, name, to name one of those. When a vehicle is used in different places, it gets billed to different places, and that is the way that we help to try to share those costs. You'll see later on, when I talk about admin allocations, that that's the same thing. That's a big number, but it makes sure, it would be a bigger number overall if everybody had to have their own billing team, if everybody had to have their own whatever in each fund. We make sure that that money is shared, so we don't have to spend as much. We do have park improvements this year, and I believe, I'm going to make sure that I'm not, we have a playground also this year, and that is, sorry.
Park.
Yep. Sorry, I missed it. Anyway, we do, we are replacing a playground this year, and that's, we're looking forward to that. Those are always the fun ones. When Kyle pitched mulch, rubber mulch this last year, I said, well, do we need that? He said, yeah, we, we need this. Okay, so we did it, and if you've seen the response to it, it's been incredibly positive. These are kind of nice, simply because you get a lot of real good PR, a lot of really happy people when their kids are playing on new park equipment. And park equipment is expensive, it always is, but we're going to have some good park stuff, and I think that's a positive item. You'll also notice through your packet that you have IT improvements, that's, this is another one of those perishable items. At some point, switches go out, at some point, we need a different server, we need to upgrade, there are items that we need to have, that when we forego them, sometimes we have to get them later. You'll see that with our carpet, you'll see that with a number of different items, we ultimately have to get to them, but we are putting those in the budget to make sure that we continue to operate. The last year has shown us the value of what we can do through IT. We've had independent workstations that have gone home. When I was sick, I worked, I was able to work from home and did, no break, and it was, maybe I should have taken one, but I didn't, and it was very useful, and it was very efficient. These are things that we can do, we have options for people, in a number of situations that we can use, not just because of health, but because of a scheduling problem, or any number of items. So there are a number of those in there as well. We have a couple of ongoing capital costs that I want to draw your attention to. I'm not picking on the police department, these are definitely needed items, but because of the way that they're paid for, they continuously come around, our 911 system just has a payment all, every year, that you're seeing there, $47,000 in order for us to have that system. This was purchased two years ago, Chief?
Three years ago.
Three years ago, so it's nothing new to us, but it's something that you're going to see come around again, and again, and again, and that's just one of those costs. I assure you, police equipment in terms of communication and those systems are just expensive, and you have like one or two people, one or two groups that actually provide. Motorola's got a real good handle on a lot of that. Tasers, we replace, how many tasers?
Five.
Five tasers a year, every year, just, we, we're just on a rotation, and then we're on a service program, so we have those over and over again. Radios are the same way. So we budgeted for, I believe this budget's five radios, they're $5,000 apiece. God, again, God bless Motorola, I guess, they're doing something.
Those in cars, or those personal hand units?
Those, there's a, those are portable radios, so they're on the officers.
So one of the other things is that this last year, we budgeted $25,000 and got the radios, but we also were able to get a grant and purchase another five radios on top of that. So this last year, we ended up budgeting 25 and spending 50, because we got extra money in, and we made sure that that went to the particular, particular cost center. But keeping in mind that there are a number of things throughout the budget that are just recurring. One of the things we'll talk about eventually is an ERP system. An ERP system, even the one we have right now, has a recurring annual cost. It is. Our NeoGov system has recurring annual cost, these are normal things for operation, but they do kind of, we do take them into account as we're doing, making choices on our operations. Talking about enterprise funds, we all know enterprise funds operate largely like a business, or they're supposed to in general. They are allowed to set rates, and we have done that in the last two years, and we'll do it again this coming year. Enterprise funds in this case are water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. Enterprise funds are intended to generate the sufficient revenues to meet their operating obligations, with rates were increased this year, water, sewer, 3%, and then sanitation at 2%. Cash balances are used, the cash balances that we talk about in here are generated by there, they're not coming out of the general fund to go to water, or vice versa, that's not how it works, and we can't do that. Keeping in mind, the water fund starts out with revenues of about $3.5 million, and does include transfer from cash like the others. Operational expenditures are about 2.7, with capital expenditures at $821,750. Obviously, this is a reduction in capital from the previous year, but obviously, they had some pretty big projects, that's very normal. Some of the highlights are the completion of the Cowboy Lane Waterline Project, this was, this is a necessary project because it is part of the consideration for the easement that allows the Riverton Water Supply Project, so it gets prioritized. It's about $500,000 to complete that, and that's assuming that our estimates hold. So that's a conversation, and those are big projects. West Main Waterline Replacement was already bid in '21, we've had that conversation. And also, we talk about replacement of a one-ton dump bed, these are just a couple, and we share that again with wastewater, why? Because they can both use it, then we don't have to just buy one for each all the time. Moving on, the sewer fund revenues at 2.8, transfer from cash and operational expenditures, sorry, transfer from cash followed by operational expenditures at 2 million, just over $2 million, almost 2.1. Capital expenditures here at 731,750. Wastewater Treatment Plan improvements are significant, centrifuge, spare rotating assembly, sludge building, and I would like, and we can, I can, I don't have to read them all to you, it's not that kind of meeting. I will tell you that if you have specific questions about those, have you met Kyle? Because, but I will tell you, as you look through the budget description, you're going to see that a lot of these are very important, they're big changes, and they, those systems cost a lot of money, and they require a lot of maintenance. So as you have questions, and if anybody wants tours of those, that's something that, I mean, you haven't lived until you've been to the wastewater plant, I guess, because honestly, it's kind of interesting to find out where those come from, but to also find out, hey, look at that, oh, that's $200,000, and it takes six months to get here, so we have to plan ahead. Again, splitting the one-ton dump bed with the water fund. Sanitation Fund revenues at two point, approaching 2.8 million, transfer from cash at 457, with operational expenditures, expenditures of 2.2. Capital expenditures here are a little over $500,000. Keeping in mind, we just got the tub grinder, last year, we had a truck budgeted, we used some of that, we used that money. The tub grinder is here and working, it's really pretty, and I'm told it's not flammable, so there's that. But we also have the purchase of a sanitation truck, just like all of our other vehicles, they break down. Sanitation trucks have a lot of moving parts, and they take a beating, and so they do break down, and they are expensive, and that is just part of the cost of doing business with those. However, that is obviously at $307,000, a pretty significant amount of money to have in front of us, and those come about, we have a number of those, so we use them. Flatbed Operator's Truck and a methane monitor, methane monitoring building, part of our monitoring, monitoring function for the old landfill. Airport Fund, and I talked about the, the plethora of different funding sources, and a lot of credit going to Kyle and the team, everybody involved with regard to revenues at 1.7 million, which includes PFC revenue, CARES Act funding, Carissa funding, American Rescue Plan, and transfer, keeping in mind, the ARP funding that is denoted here is not the money that I will talk about later that is direct, directly distributed to the city. Operating expenditures of $652,000, so that's just our operating. Capital expenditures of over $1 million this time. We, recently, we've seen how much it costs to replace the gate, to do work on the hangars, it, it's expensive, aviation is expensive, but it also gives a great deal of benefit to our community. So we talk about the pivot gate replacement, the hangar improvements, and hangar acquisition, those items are all in here and is, are part of the packet for your review. Talking a little bit about our Economic Development Fund, this is exciting, because this is one of those ones that we're going to be hearing the, having discussions about, and council's going to get recommendations in the next month with regard to potential funding of economic development in our community. It's surprising how difficult it is to actually get economic develop, money from a city to a business to economic, for economic development. That's a little more challenging, because there's a number of things in place, and have been for a very long time, in Wyoming especially, that say you cannot allocate money certain ways. Keeping that in mind, we have $24,000, we talked about previously way back at the beginning, that goes to the Riverwalk. There is a, that is paid off $24,000 at a time, and eventually, the city will own the Riverwalk that is currently being managed by the Depot Foundation, and that, that's been improved, and eventually, we'll own it, and that's part of that. Then that money goes away, well, but then the work starts, because then we have to maintain it as well, so, you know, it's probably going to stay about the same. The other one here is that we have $600,000 estimated for the Edge Funding this year, that is just this year, and that is beginning collecting now, and we should be, we should be receiving it, I believe in July, I think is.
I believe we should be receiving it this month sometime in May, is it not?
It's collecting, I know it's collecting, it starts, start April, May, so maybe June, if it's the same as the other. So when that starts coming in, that starts going into the bank. Keeping in mind, while you can allocate it, you allocate it, you cannot distribute it until it's actually received. And we've had that conversation, and I'll go through that again next time we go through this, I won't belabor it, our conversation now. The other item is that if we have economic development monies that can be obtained through either ARP, ARP grants or any other grants, this is another place that we could actually look at putting those, depending if they're project-specific, or allow extension of any particular service or the like. Those are the items that could be couched here as well. Whether or not they will be, I mentioned them, but I don't, we Whether or not they will be, I mentioned them, but I don't, we don't have any insight. We are only just receiving some of the guidance on the funding that is released from the federal government now. We have a number of other funds and we talked about those. So we talked about the two. One is General Fund. Then we have enterprise funds. We also have some fiduciary funds. The 911 Fund with regard to monies coming in for, for emergency services. The 1% sales tax and revenue expenditures are approaching almost 2 million dollars. Listed is Hill Street, West Sunset Drive, Northeast, North 16th East Pavement Preservation Project and Lewis Street, which we just got done talking about. So great. We have debt service. We service nine loans throughout all the funds for a total annual expenditure of three, about 340,000 dollars. Let me be very clear. In four different communities, this is one of the lower amounts of debt that I've seen. That's good. We don't want to take that and we try to avoid it. It makes the picture look a little different. Some communities are a little more comfortable with taking debt. Personally, I'm not a big fan of it if I can avoid it. However, we do have five loans in the water fund, three in the sewer fund and one in the airport fund. By the way, the airport fund is the DCI building, which is an in and an out. So I don't want to make, seem like we're paying for something we're not. The water fund, a specific item, we're making the initial payment on it that we're making this year that is budgeted here. Well, while we don't necessarily have to get to it till next year, will actually end up saving us roughly 46,000.
Tony, I have that we will save 44,000 dollars over the life of the loan by making an early payment and will also reduce our annual payment down substantially for making the early, the early.
About seven?
Seven thousand dollars.
About 7,000 dollars. So that's something that as we look forward, look forward and how we pay things, we try to take advantage of those opportunities to try to reduce that over time, reduce that burden. Administrative allocations is another way that we've talked about previously of how we share costs. For instance, you, we need individuals who do the finance work for any particular department. Because money comes in, money comes out and we are required by law to account for that appropriately. Instead of having the water fund have a finance person and the sewer fund and the like, those costs are pooled together, any of those shared costs are pooled together and then shared amongst the other funds outside of the general fund and those, and so that does come into the general fund. That is pretty much one of your few exceptions of where money can flow from an enterprise fund into the general fund. Why? Because they're paying for a service. As it points out, the tool seeks to reflect true costs of running general purpose government and the business enterprises by allocating certain costs to the enterprise funds. Talking about contracts for services, this is something that, honestly, I didn't ever do it until coming back to Wyoming to work, but other communities do the same thing a lot as well. This year, we're budgeting 276,285 dollars for community service contracts. To be clear, that's Central Wyoming Cats, Skate Association, Riverton Ambassadors, Youth Services, Volunteer Firemen, Riverton Little League, Paws, Injury Prevention, CWCR Rec, Eagles Hope Transitions and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. This 11 agencies instead of, as opposed to nine and is about a 15% increase over previous years. During our meeting, the discussion was to leave it as a whole. And so we did, we did just that because we felt that the budget we're presenting allowed for us to do that. Personnel compensation, we've, over the last three years, we've frozen two out of the three years. There has not been a cost of living adjustment for four years. Making sure I'm getting all, getting all that right. Is that correct? Okay. As such, we do, we are suggesting or recommending a 2% cost of living adjustment. The area average for the last quarter, at the end of this, our most recent reading was 2.7% cost of living increase. So this doesn't actually go up even that far. Health insurance, the good news is it actually remains the same. We talked about this previously. Now, keeping in mind, we are still going to see quotes again. We had this conversation and we know that we were worried about what it was going to do moving forward. Long conversation and a good one. We're going to revisit that again because we said we were going to and it's a good cost control measure. We need to make sure that we're up to date on that. So you can expect to have that come back. That'll be a good item. Talking about reserves, the good thing is, unlike, unlike last year, we don't intend to get into our reserves this year. That's nice. That means that those real emergencies get taken care of. That's what you're there there for. So comparatively, that's a little bit better. Estimate that you have in the budget right now, and I think that number's wrong. I think it's 37,000, shows a property insurance, just property. Insurance number that went up, that was a significant increase compared to the previous year. The number that we actually have that's not the placeholder is actually 37, I think about 37,000 dollars lower than that. So right now, the budget that we're still presenting, we'll already see a 37,000 dollar estimated savings. So that's good. Sometimes we get those numbers late. That's just when we get them and we get them in there as fast as we can. I would also point out that the city is currently scheduled, here's the other good news. The city is currently scheduled to receive 1.64 million dollars in direct distribute, directly distributed federal funds. There's.
Say that number again.
1.64 million. We expect it in two tranches, which is eight, 830,000 dollars, eight, yeah, 830,000 dollars. Yes, sorry, about 800,000 dollars. The, in, how that is used is we know it can be used on infrastructure and we're trying to find the other ways in which it can be used, how it, how it has to be recouped. We know that money is coming. We also know there's other monies that are going to the state that, and through the federal government that are going to allow, that we will have access to at some point. This budget was built, with the exception of the airport funding that I denoted in the 24,000 dollars, this direct distribution is not actually included in it. And what does that mean? It means that we can offset some of the costs that we've already shown you or choose to apply it differently. There are a number of different processes or processes, purchases that may be very, very useful to us that this would cover. It, if used in infrastructure, especially in like the water and sewer funds, it can actually offset rates or make sure that our rate structure is more steady than it would be. It can talk about matching funds. There's a lot of different options, but the nice thing is that this was actually built without it. So everything from here with that funding is not assumed. It's extra. And I think that's a really positive item because we managed to do our budget not knowing what those funds would be at the time. We only received guidance a week ago. About a week ago. This was done by the time we actually received the exact information and from the source that said, this is what you're going to get. We will have another discussion probably about a stormwater utility. The legislature allowed that at one point. And so if that's going to be part of our conversation this year, whether or not it's a good idea or not is, remains to be seen. There's a lot of discussion about that. Essentially, previously, stormwater was being paid out of the general fund. So any stormwater work you had to do, still had to come out of that. It wasn't utility-based. Now it can be. But that would mean if we have this conversation and that moves forward at some point, council would be establishing another utility, which is fine. We can do that. But we need to talk about how we do it and how we do it appropriately. It's relatively new. And ultimately, as I pointed out, and I am really happy to have a legislator here. Thank you. We are going to have to have these conversations, not just about how our, how our courts are working or how juvenile, juvenile justice or law enforcement, but also how money is allocated and what we can do. There's a lot of conversations to have. We look forward to having them. So, my wife hates it when I say the words "in conclusion", but in conclusion to today's presentation, the only thing I could think to say is I think we're going to need a bigger budget at some point. And I love jaws and that's why I use this one. Your Honor, it's a slightly reduced presentation, but I wanted to try to be as concise as I could. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has, either now or at any future point. Any clarifications? I've been asked a couple times of things previously and we've been able to answer those pretty directly. I'm lucky that I, the people that are sitting around me are responsible for this budget. And I want to take just a moment to say thank you. Everybody here puts in more work than I can ever tell you. Working through the process is difficult. It takes months. It's tedious. A lot of questions to ask. When we first got the budget, I'm going to share this. Mia, Mia said, "Look, it's really good." And I said, just the initial numbers when they got together. And, and she said, and she was worried. She, rightfully so, because when we went through it for a few minutes, we found that, okay, we were counting this and the capital, it needed to be here. And all of a sudden, it became the budget we expected it to be. But the reason that we have been so successful, the reason that you get good, or you receive good quarterly reports is because the team, the team and the staff that we have, the ones that put it together and then make it work. They do a good job. They've been amazing to work with and it makes the best budget scenario you can imagine. So I would, I would like to say thank you to you all. You've done amazing. Thank you. Your Honor, I don't have anything else. I'll be happy to answer any questions or more precisely, we will be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I have one. When we calculate administrative costs into our enterprise funds, how do we, how do we do that without getting too, our thumb too heavy on the scale? Or do you, do you try to get direct costs from those department costs?
So, Your Honor, if I may.
Yes, please.
The way that we, the way that we calculate those is that we look at the departments that actually service all, not only of the general fund, but the enterprise funds as well. And so we take those cost centers and then we break them out and allocate them accordingly depending on different formulas. So the mayor and council and the city administrator are allocated out equally amongst all funds. We allocate the fleet department based on the number of vehicles and equipment that are in each of the scheduled particular funds. We allocate out community development based on the number of water tap and sewer taps and building permit fees that they issue. Police Department, we look at service calls and those that are pertaining to calls related to water. There's a water break, such and such, that they've had to respond to. So we, we look at those. We also, for administrative services, look at the number of bills that we pay each year out of the water fund, out of the sewer fund, out of the sanitation fund. Because they're saving overhead on those. They are not having to hire their own separate accounting department to do that. Human resource-related items are also allocated out of administrative services based on a formula as well. So that's how we determine what the costs are going to be to each of those, each of those enterprise funds.
That's good information to know. So we, when we're talking to individuals, we can, we can tell them that that council cost is spread over all, all sections of government, not just in one general fund purchase. The other thing, do we have a, do we have a usage date on the 1.6 million dollars for, does that have to be used by '24?
Your Honor, I believe, I believe the date is in '24. So if we have 1.64, we'd have to use it by that time for the allowable items. And we still are, we are still researching exactly what we can use it for. We know that one of the big ones is infrastructure. That's great and that's probably intended, but there's others, some handful of other things that are probably very useful that gets us down the road. I will, I will happily say that it's a new ERP system that allows us to automate certain items and provide better information in a much shorter time period. One of the things that we're going to need to look at as we move forward is how we efficiently use our time. And part of that is the technology that's available to us. When staff has to spend three hours pulling a report that 10 years ago I was pulling in two minutes, that's, that's challenging. They're getting the same information, but they could be using that time better. And we want to give them. So that's one of the things that we did pull from this budget because it's about a quarter million dollars. And we did say, Mel, maybe if we get this funding and it allows it, we can go that direction.
I did give you, I cut it out of my wife's paper, so if you may be in trouble when she sees what's on the other side of the paper.
As long as she knows you did it, sir.
There was an article in tonight's paper that deal, dealt with the fact that this money was coming to communities and, and the individual that wrote that was interested in how the community would get input into the, how those dollars were spent. And so we may have to do some public meetings on those dollars or something so that that information gets out and, and people don't assume that we just buy what we want with what we, with the overage of money that's there.
Your Honor, we can absolutely do that. Right now, we're trying to make sure that we understand exactly what we can so we can even make an initial presentation. When, it's been my experience that when we have tranches of money that come in, it's not usually a good idea to say, okay, we have money. Now what do we do? It's a good idea to have a plan and have an intention, especially since we're the ones that are going to be held responsible for its use. We need to make sure that that's, that it lines up is all. And we can absolutely have those conversations. We'll be happy to.
And the other thing that I would like to point out, you and I have had long conversations about this and you mentioned it in passing and, and you covered it really well. But we aren't defunding our police department in the least. If you go back to the capital budget summary, the, surprised me with the cost, but a bulletproof vest is 2,000 dollars and we're purchasing 10 of those. And, and those will be going to our SWAT team, I would suppose?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And, and so I want to, I want to make sure and make, make sure that the police department is fully funded to everything that they need. Because we're, we do think, we do appreciate our police.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So to be clear, if I may, Your Honor.
Please.
To be very clear, all of the positions that were in the police department are funded. Again, last year, we did have, we had a lot of new people and we weren't going to be able to fully staff. We knew at that point we were not going to plan to fully staff because of the number of new people that we had in the training that needed to happen. So just basically the HR portion of it where we got recruited, trained, had people through the process, we did have a slight reduction in funding, but not authorized strength. So we still have the same strength that we were authorized, we were trying to get up to that number. And we knew that if we ever had the opportunity and found it, we'd figure out a way to do that. This year, we're not even making that assumption. It's just all positions are funded. And there, so there is no reduction. There are five vehicles funded. Three of them are patrol. Those cost about 50,000 dollars apiece once in a time we outfit them. Then two detective vehicles that we, and because we have to do, those are unmarked and don't cost quite as much. So we do have all of those. Keeping in mind that two of those were rolled from the previous year, but even so, we're still taking three new cars in this year. We have funded all of the SRT vests. We have all of the radios. There are some new firearms in there. We had purchased some that were antiquated, not antiquated, I guess they were end of useful life previously with our ARs. So no, there is not a reduction. I understand how it can kind of be thought about that because you see the reduction in the line that says 160,000 dollars appropriately. That is simply the prisoner housing cost center moving to a different department.
And for council's sake, you can see that that moves to the municipal court directly, and Tony mentioned that, but it's right in the, it's right in the, on page five. You can see where municipal code, court went up 160 and police went down 160. And, and then the other thing, did we, did we get purchased a new, or are we going to purchase a new bullet shield?
Your Honor, with that, that was not in the budget. I didn't even think about that, to be honest with you.
We can probably try to find funding for that if, if necessary and see where we can. There, there is usually, because of the conservative nature, we can find those costs usually.
Can you surprise me with the cost of that?
Your Honor, it's about 2,500 dollars. For a really, really good one.
I think we're, I think we're all in and we just need to make sure that we're, we're funding those, that category, at least for, for mine position, that they have the funding that they need. Okay?
Your Honor, can I explain what that is?
Please.
So for, for our SWAT team, when they go up on a, like a active shooter, like a house, it's a portable shield that the first person would carry. So it's a portable shield and it's about 2,500 dollars. It's completely ballistic. So no firearms rounds can get through it or anything. So it's very imperative that our team has that.
Any other questions?
Tony, may I just clarify one thing? In the economic development budget, it shows that there's 24,000 for the Depot Foundation and then 600,000 for the half-cent optional tax. And I just want to be very clear that that is received separately and it is spent separately. There's a separate line item for that. The 24,000 dollars is actually reflected as a transfer from the general fund into the Economic Development Fund to cover the Depot Foundation. I just want to make that clear for the voters and so that they don't feel that we've already expended 24,000 dollars of that money. It's completely separate.
No.
That's a good point. That's a good point. And is that, how many more years do we have that? Do you have that on the tip of your tongue?
I, your honor, I'm, I, do you know?
Go ahead. Feel free to answer. No, we don't.
We don't.
We don't, because it comes through the Depot Foundation. I did investigate that last year, and I do have a number. I can look it up for you.
We don't need it this moment. We can, it's your leisure. But that's a good point. So people don't assume that we were already spending that half cent. We are not. Correct?
That's correct. Your honor, we have not spent any of it. We haven't received any of it. So, and the Edge Committee will meet this coming Thursday, this coming Thursday to discuss and potentially recommend a council funding. At that point, that funding recommended, recommendation would come to council. Council would direct staff to prepare agreements.
So we have till the second or to propose changes in the budget?
If there's, if there's any requests or questions or proposed changes, we would need to know about them very soon, because we do have advertising requirements. But we, you will adopt on the eighth.
On the eighth we'll adopt.
And that's, and that's restricted by state statute that says, just as Mia talked about earlier, that gives us a very small window in order to address that. Keeping in mind that throughout the year, there are some things that trigger immediately upon adoption. You know, July 1st, we operate under the new budget. We're pulling out of these lines. But throughout the year, we don't expect that it's a completely stagnant item either.
Since we're not all speed readers like Councilman Salisbury, we'll have to, we have a short period of time. So if you do see something that you don't agree with or you want further clarification, earlier is better than later.
We would ask that you tell us as soon as possible. Please. Thank you.
Super. Thanks. Good report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We now move on to council committee reports and roundtable. So let's start in the middle. Mike, you want to start us off?
Thank you. I did attend the force committee meeting. And again, you know, spring has sprung and they've got multiple projects in the works. Hill Street, of course, is, is going. They're going to have Hill Street closed for a couple of months while they totally redo that. They've got a lot of utility work going through there and again, improve that driving surface. As many of us know, that street's been in trouble for a long time. Lewis Street, which we just approved, they're in the process of doing the engineering for Sunset from, I think, Federal all the way through basically Eighth Street. And again, there's a irrigation line through there. There's a lot of work to be done there, and that'll probably get done over the next couple of years. But we're doing all the engineering work now. Sixteenth, Sixteenth Street, down where it connects into Webbwood, is on the agenda. And again, we're looking at sort of how the bids come in this year. Again, some of these bids have come in sort of high, as we saw with the airport gate and some of that, you know, materials have changed, climbed and all that kind of stuff. So again, that committee is extremely frugal with the city's 1% money. And they depend on, you know, a lot of citizen input on projects that we need to be working on. So if people see things that they think should be improved, they need to bring that forward, because just as soon as we're done with all these projects this summer, we go into the planning of what we're going to look at doing next year. And so we need the citizens' input to do that. We use the pavement study that we did several years ago. We look at trying to combine projects with needed water and sewer improvements. So again, Tony, if we, that 1.64 million dollars, I think we can figure out how to spend it on projects that we all know that we need to get done. And again, that committee's always looking forward to fixing the different things that we find in the streets. You know, every time you really start looking, paying attention, there's places that concrete's failing, asphalt's failing, different things like that. So of course, the airport's cranking along really well, doing good. They're having, I think, looking at adding some more flights for the summer, hopefully, because they've had flights where they've had to turn people down, like I mentioned last time. So that's a good problem to have. And of course, the ambassadors groups working on helping do some, you know, different projects within the city and helping, looking towards marketing Riverton. And we're sort of working with Rock Springs, hopefully, on, hopefully taking advantage of some of the additional traffic we could gain where Jackson's going to have their airport closed next summer. So again, that's going to shift some things around. Everybody's trying to figure out how that's going to work. It's going to be challenging. And so we're working on that, too. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Lindsay?
I wasn't able to attend the PAWS meeting because it was during baseball, where I'm also running that and taking pictures and watching children play. But they have been keeping me up to date through their emails. They opened their lobby. They were just doing it by appointment only. So now the lobby's open Tuesday through Friday, noon to 5:00, and Saturday's 10:00 to 1:00. They are also have a, they've teamed up with the new rescue option for the kiddies. And they're looking for someone who'd be willing to drive halfway to Casper to transport. So if anyone's interested in that, they could contact PAWS. And then they're also going to be having a fundraiser in June at the Elks on the 26th. And I don't have all the details on that. Hopefully, I'll have more before next meeting. And then also, more baseball, but this is Legion. They are doing a fundraiser right now to help on cost of travel and umpires. There's a board up at the Depot where you can purchase a number. Any one of the squares is for sale for the number on the square. So if you pick 131, it's $131. But if they sell all squares, which is 1 through 200, it'll raise $21,000 for the Legion, which would be a huge help. So yeah, if you want to let me know, if you want to buy a square, I would be happy to pass that on to whoever needs to know. So it's a good fundraiser.
Thank you. Christie?
I attended the senior citizen meeting with Mia to go over the stuff we already talked about earlier. I did not attend the chamber meeting. Usually, we have it on the first Thursday, and I hadn't heard anything. And so I got a thing at 7 o'clock on Wednesday night, but I was already out of town. So their biggest thing is the Ag Appreciation banquet. I had about 120 people attend it. And they talked about the business after hours, people that will be doing things. May will be Hampton Inn, June will be Wild Dot, or Wild Today, sorry. July, they don't have anything scheduled. August will be Abbe House. September will be Miami.com. October, Teton Therapy. November, Shelley Anderson Photography. And December, County 10. And the other thing they were talking about is the 5K that they're going to be having. They need to find a different place to have that. They were going to have it with CWC, and they are not able. So they're looking into different places, and they've had suggestions for that. But I also want to thank the Police Department, National Police Week. We really appreciate your service. And I want to thank Kyle and his staff because of getting the streets fixed from the water breaks on Eighth and Pershing. My mother was complaining about that two days, and now I can say, we got that done. And I'm really excited about having new playground equipment in Sunset. So thank you for that, too.
Christie, what kind of location do they need for the 5K? Is it indoor? Are they trying?
No, I suggested the golf course. I mean, they're just different places. So I don't know why I wasn't at the meeting to see that.
Golf course would be a good place.
So I don't know where they're going to be.
I'm going to tell everybody I thought of that.
That was my suggestion. We'll see. They're going to, we'll talk about it at the June 3rd meeting, probably, I'm guessing. I don't know.
Okay. Let us know if you need help with that. Kyle?
I attended the waste management meeting on Monday. They plotted that the tub grinder was working. Saves them space. They are still working on the nuclear option, which is that their tax base has gone from 3.5 million to $875,000. So they're looking at the scenarios of shutting down different places. Still Riverton and Tony informed me that there's been no conversation between he and that area yet. So I will chide them. But the interesting thing was, if they did shut down Lander and reduce and push all of the waste towards Sandral, that the charge point would drop down to 6743, which they immediately raised or rounded up to $70, just in case they had made a mistake in their arithmetic. But the reason they were able to do that was because of the duplication and reduce pulling from Riverton to Lander. Now, Mike and I were here then when we talked and said, what a, what's lower than stupid? Reason for pulling garbage from Riverton to Lander. And it was automatically why it's a smart move, because we're saving space. And, and we have a mandate to fill up Lander by 2024, which is right in the corner. Anyway, so they're figuring that Lander will be full at 2027. And we still, so anyway, that figure came up of 6743. And interesting enough, the figure always varies, because the amount that they spend on covering is fixed. So the more garbage you put in, the lower the ton costs. And I made the statement, well, it appears that we're putting in less. Oh, no. When the economy goes to heck, then we throw more away. So I couldn't figure that one out. But anyway, the next thing of interest was that they had assigned a new contract for scrap metal. Their previous scrap metal was $48 a ton. It immediately has now, we're renewing it, and it's going to $78 a ton. And the reason for that is, there's a shortage of scrap metal. And if you haven't looked at buying a used car lately, they are going up in price. So all of that was interesting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Carla?
Your honor, I attended the District 25 Rec Board meeting and just progressing along, processing some applications. They're still taking some. So just get ahold of me or Jody Ray or some, you know, someone on that committee. I attended the Community Engagement Committee. And last weekend, we actually had a trash pickup. It was a spring cleanup. And a lot of people turned out for that. They divided up into teams and they gave some prizes for the biggest. They found a couch, found a hood, no, a, a car door that they found and several other things. And we had a lot of businesses that were kind enough to donate gift certificates. So a lot of people won some good stuff. As far as committees go, that's about it. But I was just looking through this email from the Riverton ambassadors, and I think there's some things in here worth mentioning that are coming up. Right now, it's Thank an EMT Week, May 16th through the 22nd. So if you know an EMT, make sure to give them a big thanks. They work really hard. The Community Engagement Committee, along with CWC, Our Recreation, is doing a summer kickoff community party. That's on May 28th, on the last day of school, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. They're going to have lots of fun games and activities going on. It's at JC Park. They'll have, they're looking for some volunteers, maybe a group that would like to do a fundraiser to sell some food up there. So if you have any, you know, idea that someone might want to do that, just contact Mary, ask them. I want to mention Mary. That woman is amazing. She works her tail off, and she is all about Riverton and the youth. And I just want to recognize her. It looks like CWC is offering a CNA training. That's in July, from July 12th through August 8th. Applications are accepted through June 1st. And if you're interested, call CWC at 332-3394, or Fremont County BOCs at 856-2028. Other than that, I think that's about all I've got.
Could you give that website so people could get to it? Because Ambassador's website?
Oh, let me see. I don't know if I have that available. Let's see. They've got a hashtag, #Goriverton, and then facebook.com/goRiverton.
And that group is really moving. And you gotta, you gotta hold on tight when you get in that room. So if, if you have anything that you need help with, they're, they're there to do that. And we do appreciate all the work that they put forth. The other thing, rendezvous is, the rendezvous committee's looking for balloon sponsors, Megan, we're 10 down. So I think I'll take one. So we're just nine down. And I think I got another one I'll try and to get to you. But anybody out there, it's a lot of fun, and they'd be smart to get on that before they're all gone, right? Okay. Tony?
Your honor, luckily, I've spoken enough this evening, and Carla covered a lot of the things that I was going to. Thank you. We do have the Edge meeting on Thursday. I already mentioned that. That is at 6 o'clock in these chambers, sorry, in the bullpen, because Eric got to it first for planning commission. FCA is next Thursday here at City Hall. And the Airport Board is this Friday. I would add that my family did have the opportunity to fly both out and in previously at the airport for their first time. And it was outstanding, and we picked them up at the airport. And I'm pretty sure it was 47 people on that flight, I think was what I was told. So that was pretty neat to see coming in. I'll look forward to being out. I'm heading out in September. I get to fly out then. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. I was contacted this week by a middle schooler, and they, they were looking for a project to do. And they wanted to paint the band shell. And I, lots of times, I, I gotta be careful because every once in a while, I think I own the city and I just commit to things. And I, I need to run this past the council. They wanted to paint the band shell, which gets quite a bit of paint, doesn't it, Kyle? Every few minutes, we're painting.
It's great.
Yeah, it's a pretty good deal. And so in discussing it, the, the maintenance building for the old pool was mentioned. And I shot back an email that they could paint that, except they couldn't paint the mural. And somehow, in the conversation, it came up that they would like to do a mural. And which wall could they do the mural on? And so I asked, Tony shot me back a really quick email, but I was already apologizing on what he was doing his. And he said that a mural would need to be approved by the council. And what I showed you is their rendering of what they'd like to do on the north wall of the old pool building. And this is just a bunch of helping hands. And so they apologized for their artwork hands, but that's what they would like to do on the north wall that faces the farmer's market, goes off to that, that side. And so we would need a vote of approval. Is anybody opposed to such a mural? Is anybody opposed to such a mural? Any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so if everybody's, if no one has a problem with it, do we need an official vote?
Your Honor, I, I don't think so, I think we'll be fine, if, if council's good with it. Our understanding is they'll paint a base coat, and then basically, do I think they're doing just handprints?
And then we're hoping that they will also paint the east elevation and the south elevation. That was an idea, okay? And then I did attend the Planning Commission meeting that Eric put on, he has another one coming up, he does a good job with those. The ambassadors meeting, like I said, is a quick movie, and, and they do a lot of good work in there. Anybody that needs help in the city of Riverton, you should approach that group, and, and they will be quick to, to get your information out. That website is amazing, it has all of the things that are available to do in the city, and so, you would be wise to put that in your, I'm not that good IT person, but it should be a reference for you for things that are happening, and of course, the Community Engagement Group, Carla does a good job with that, and she was at the meeting, is a little bit sparse for members, but their community cleanup was a great success, and I appreciate what they did, and it's hard work to keep Riverton looking good. I might mention that if you spray your weeds right now, they're small, and it's easy to do, and I sprayed 13 gallons of weed killer yesterday, and I would recommend that we all get out and spray as many weeds as we can to keep ourselves looking good, so. That's all I have to say, I really appreciate the help that comes through the city of Riverton, and we look forward to, to being supportive. Staff, have anything to add?
No, Your Honor, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I did find the website for the Riverton ambassadors, it's rivertonambassadors.org.
Okay, and I would recommend that we, as a community, that we look at that quite often, and, and pay attention to what's posted there, because it's a, it's a pretty quick reference to the fun things that are, that are going on. Other than that, we have no executive session. Without any objections, I would say that we're stand adjourned at 9:20, 28?